Countdown. You could hear a pin drop outside. This is quiet.
That's Larry, in case him I don't know.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 7, 2017, Meeting of Mayor and Counsel. We'll start with our invocation by Councilman Danny Carter, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's rise and bow our heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we give thanks for our lives, we give thanks for our city, our state, and our nation. We ask that you continue to bless each and every one of these parts of our lives. We also ask that you guide us tonight, Lord, as we meet to conduct the business of the city, lead, guide, and direct us in everything that we do and that we make the right decisions for our citizens of Hillerica. These names in your ass in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with ceremonial presentations, and I believe the person that we were recognizing, Ms. Swain, will be here at the April meeting. Is that correct, Alisa? Okay. So... We are at adoption of the agenda. I'd like to add CDBG grant update.
A2.
Okay. We'll add that, Alisa, under A2. Counsel updates. Okay, never mind. We're gonna vote on the agenda. I'm sorry, I'm still getting used to it. Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda?
So maybe. Second.
We have a move by Councilman Best, seconded by Councilman Carter. Discussion, not all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, now, counsel updates. Anybody? Okay, moving right along. City manager's report. Mr. Jackson?
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah, it's closer than mine.
I have only one thing to report. I'd like to give all of y'all an update on the status of the city manager search process. We have posted the job on three or four sites, and to date, as of today, we've received back about thirty-five applications. And I wouldn't be surprised to see that number double in the next few days. So hopefully, we'll have several applicants to choose from. What will happen, basically, is that staff will go through and make that first cut. And I have been meeting one-on-one with the council members, and I've got a couple more to go. But during these one-on-one sessions, I am asking them to tell me in very specific terms what they are looking for in the city manager, the successful city manager candidate. What kinds of experience do they want? What kinds of qualifications? What skill sets are they looking for? And once we get a consensus of what that is, what all of the council members are looking for, that will inform our process as we sort of whittle the field down to a manageable few. And we will then take, I don't know how many, however it turns out to be, three, four, five, half a dozen, I don't know yet, but we will take the final group and give them to the council for their interview process and their decision. So that's where we are. We're off to a good start. I'm pleased that we've received thirty-five applications already, and it's only been posted, how long? Since Friday. So we're off to a good start. I'd like to see more, and we'll keep you posted. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not the city manager by any means, but I do have a couple of things to report in this slot, since there's no slot for a city attorney's report. Couple items that have been noted lately that I did want to report on. One, people continue to ask about what's the status of the Harthouse, and where does the city stand on that. We have continued to work positively with the trustees of the First Baptist Church. And the last step was, we sent back our latest draft, probably two to three weeks ago, and they wanted to take some time to look over it. And I suspect, I anticipate that we will be meeting with them in the very near future to try and finalize any discussions or negotiations about it. I have not perceived that there have been any snags, so I think that we should be able to come to a conclusion on that issue within the next month or two, if not sooner. Secondly, at the work session the other day, I was asked to make a brief report with regard to the status of the road paving project. And at that time, I didn't have a whole lot of information, but I've done a lot of studying since the work session. And although I can't give you the entire history of the transaction, and there are certainly some things to look at, the issues of main concern to the city are whether or not we are getting what we contracted to get, and whether or not the work that has been performed thus far has been sufficient. The answer to those questions are that, you know, the city has not lost anything thus far. We have some concerns about the quality of the work that has been done, but based on everything I have seen thus far, it is not an abnormal situation in that there are punch list items that are required to come back and be taken care of. There are items that the city has pointed out that we are not satisfied with, that under the terms of the contract, the contractor is obligated to come back and take care of. So with that being said, I just wanted to confirm to the council and to the public is that the city has not suffered any loss thus far, that we do have a bond in place that we can call on if the work is deficient. But we are anticipating that our engineer and our contractors are going to be back to finish up what they should have done in the beginning, and to correct those normal problems that always arise. I'm not a paver. Some of you may be. But, you know, I understand that it is somewhat normal to have some punch list items that you come back to correct at the end of a project. It will be important for the city to ensure that the quality of road, once we're told that they are done doing what they are going to do, it meets the standard of the contract, which is supposed to meet the Georgia DOT standard. If it does not, and you can be assured that we will have someone independent tell us whether it does or does not, then we will call upon, you know, any recourse provided for by the contract to make sure that we get what we contracted for. So I don't know if that's, it doesn't give you the whole history, but that's sort of where we are.
Thank you, David. I appreciate that.
Summarized, don't panic yet.
Stand by for more information, right. Okay, public comment. Those of you wishing to speak in public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and make sure that microphone's on, because I didn't check it.
It is.
Sounds like it's on. Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive. My comments are about the Connors Road Park. I would encourage the city council to look at the size of the area dedicated to dog parks. It's my understanding from the briefings that the large dog park is about a half an acre. My house is on a half an acre, and I have three Goldens, and it's not big enough for me to throw balls to all those three Goldens. So I would encourage you to take whatever efforts you can make to make that area bigger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
John Hataback, 3106 Golfer's Way. Couple of comments, nothing new. You've heard it before. I see that on the agenda tonight are some modifications to the charter. I encourage those. There have been language problems with the city charter, but there is a lot more work that needs to be done to the charter. I was disappointed to see us put the charter review off, but understand the priorities of the budget, et cetera. But I really encourage you to get back involved in the charter, because, you know, we'll be faced with another year-end problem if we don't, and there are some significant changes that are needed in the charter. I was very encouraged at the last work session to see so many of the department managers and directors here and speaking, and I hope that continues. That was very encouraging. I'm also encouraged to hear the city managers, the interim city managers, comments about the process of looking for the new city manager. Sounds like that's going well. But again, I encourage you to somehow see if you cannot get some public involvement in this process. Our track record has not looked all that great. I think we're headed into our sixth city manager in the last three or four years. There are people in the community who have experience in recruiting and hiring executives. Find some way to utilize that support. But I'm encouraged by what I hear with the process so far, and hope that that continues to good end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. The...
Do we have a planned process for the park comments?
Jody Mount, 214 Rockmark Road. I want to encourage city to work with the Zorba people on the trail. And it's my understanding that Douglas County actually has an MOU with them. They know trails. They have resources. They don't have money, but they have resources. They have engineers. They have laborers. They have people that knows what's going on. They've done this all over the southeast. And we don't have anyone, including the people that designed it, who have ever done this thing before. And it just seems silly for us to try to reinvent something that we don't know anything about. And these people are willing. They want to do this. I also want to agree with Mike, Mr. Young, on the size of the dog park. You know, that's, if we're gonna do something, let's do it right. Hello? We don't get this chance every day. And I want to thank the citizens that have participated in the process. It's been kind of disappointing. Don't expect kind words from me, though, if people start complaining that weren't there. They're not gonna find them with me.
Jody, real quick, the Zorba people, aren't those the bike?
Yes.
The bike trail people?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And as our custom, Mike, just so you know what we started doing, because I felt like there was a little bit of a disconnect in the past when people would get up in public comment and ask questions. We don't respond directly to those questions as a council. But what we had started doing was the city manager would respond to those questions through staff. So if the staff is here, if there were questions that were asked that involved those departments, then if you would make sure those questions get back to the folks, I would appreciate it. Any more public comments?
John Mount, 214 Rockmark. I spoke last week on, or last month, on the paving issue, and I did not hear anybody from this, any return calls from the city on my driveway. So it's been over a month now. We've been falling off this big ledge, trying to get in and out of the driveway. We're on a pretty busy road, so it's hard to slow down completely. I'm hoping we're not damaging our cars before this gets fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Any more public comment? If not, we will move into the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, for those of you in the audience, is a single item that encompasses all the things the city council would normally approve with little comment. Each of these items was discussed at the Thursday, February 2, 2017 council work session, and it was unanimous consensus of the governing body to place the following items on the consent agenda. And I guess I'll read these what I did last month. The North Loop bypass and roundabouts. The North Loop bypass and roundabouts. Well, the first one is agreement with GDOT. Second one is a supplemental agreement with GDOT. Another one for the North Loop bypass and roundabouts is an engineering service proposal. Vehicle purchases, surplus items, highway seventy-eight yard sale, and equipment for five police vehicles. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes. Motion to approve, consider agenda.
Have a motion to approve, and a second. Motion was made by the Councilman Carter, seconded by Councilman McDougal. Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous.
Tab B, Finance. Sarah?
Good evening. This is your January financial update. As I mentioned last week, it's hard to see a true trend in January, because many of the revenues we receive are actually put back to 2016. We'll start at the top. This is the general fund, which is our governmental side, which includes the administration, finance, police, parks, those sorts of things. Our total cash right now is $6.8 million at the end of January. And that is higher than other points of the year, because we've just received most of our property tax. The next item is our unassigned fund balance. So this is our reserve, $6.3 million. That'll be updated after this next audit. The next section are some of our major revenue sources in the general fund, all three being taxes, our sales tax, property tax, and occupational tax. You can see there, we haven't received much year-to-date. Again, most of what we received is booked back to the prior year. The fund status there, you can see the total revenue budget and total expense budget for our general fund for 2017 is $11.9 million for both. And we are trending up compared to last year, but again, we're just one month into the year. Next is our enterprise fund, the water sewer side. Our total cash right now, operating at the end of January, was a negative $1 million. Again, this is not a negative bank balance, but this is negative as part of our pooled cash, and it does look higher than it was in the previous month, which was about $300,000 negative, because we moved the majority of our debt service to a new account. Investments is $2 million. Our outstanding bond principal is almost $34 million, and our reserve for that fund is $1.4 million. Revenue stat is right there. You can see our main two are the water and sewer sales. We are slightly higher than last year for this one. And then our fund status overall, the revenue and the expense for that fund is $7.1 million for both. Our revenue is slightly behind last year, but we're just one month into the year. Our expense looks exceptionally higher than last year, at 590% higher than last year, but again, that's our debt payment. Enterprise fund, this is solid waste, which is our garbage pickup and our solid waste pickup. Our operating cash shows a negative, and as does our reserve, which we've been discussing. Hope to have that remedied with our rate study. Next is the revenue there, our budget of $863,000, slightly less than last year, but again, I think it's timing. And then you can see our overall revenue and expense for that. Any questions on this? This is on the website, as well as our check registers. We update those every month on the website.
Would you clarify the part about moving the debt service to a different account and how it affected its deficit, the deficit?
Alisa, if you'll go up to the middle part, where it shows a deficit of about $1 million. Keep going a little bit more. Right there. The total cash in our operating fund for the enterprise fund here was, I think, a negative $300,000 the last time I presented. So that difference of $600 or so thousand was the amount I moved to our new debt service account. Y'all approved a new, a separate debt service account, so we can keep that money separate. So since that hadn't been done before, I had to move a big chunk out all at one time. Going forward, we'll do a little bit every month.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Sarah. Item A2.
All right, this is our CDBG update. Wanted to bring you an update, because the city manager and our public works director and I met with our engineer for this project this morning. As I mentioned at the work session, we were, we thought we didn't have enough to meet the 71% low to moderate income for that area in order to keep the original area secure for this grant project, and...
Sarah, can I stop, just for the benefit of the audience that may not know what that is? Can you just kind of give a brief overview of what that is?
Okay. It's called a community development block grant, and this is for us to receive $750,000 in order to improve infrastructure in a selected area of town that meets a low to moderate income designation. So we had to survey that area to make sure that the occupants fit the low to moderate income selection. And as of last week, we hadn't met that. We were at 66%. We're supposed to be at 71% in order to keep that area. Several attempts have been made. Ms. McPherson went out as well, trying to round up the rest of those surveys. We lacked eight, and we were able to get a few more. But I talked to the grant writers today, and they have reduced the size of the area that's being impacted. But at this point, I think we've done all we can do, because they were going to have to remove certain areas for them not meeting the low to moderate income anyway. So the area basically has been redrawn, and we still have eighty-four houses that are gonna be improved, not the houses themselves, but the infrastructure there. Let me look back up at my notes. The estimated engineering as of today was $1.1 million, $87,000. The grant is $750,000, so the city is still gonna have to come out of pocket for that difference of about $300,000. So if our area was bigger, that would have been more out of the city's budget anyway. So I think we're in a good place with where we are. The application is due April 1, and it'll be awarded by September. So by September, we'll know whether we got the $750,000. So at the last meeting, or I think at the February meeting, it was approved that the mayor would sign off on these application documents. So I have those ready to be signed. Any other questions?
Sarah, will this hit this year's budget, the 300-plus thousand that we have to come up with?
In talking with the engineer today, and he can speak up if he needs to, since the grant won't be awarded till September, I don't know how much of the construction will actually be happening in '17. So we may be doing some budget amendments, and it may have to go into the 2018 budget, but it is available in the '17 budget. Hopefully, the project can get started in '17.
You said it would affect eighty-four homes. It would improve the infrastructure for eighty-four homes?
Yes.
And that you had a map. Do you have that map?
I do. I don't have it here. I can get that for you.
Can you get me a copy of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Did any more of those surveys trickle in this afternoon?
No.
Okay, there were two that, I told them I'd pick them up.
Okay.
And bring them. So at this point, are we, should there be any effort to receive anymore?
I don't think so. I think they've already, with having to remove, like I said, they removed a certain couple streets that were higher income anyway. So they've already redrawn it, and it matches, it fits our criteria. So I think we've got the best area that we could have at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah. Good job. Tab B, Human Resources. Ms. Rooks?
Good evening, everybody. We are going to go through, what I'm proposing is a sick leave policy, actually modifying the sick leave policy to limit the amount of leave that a person can have overall. As you know, FMLA provides twelve weeks of either a paid or unpaid leave. We require our employees to use their sick and vacation leave if they want to get paid during that time. After that twelve weeks is up, we need to limit the amount of time that a person can be out. And what I'm proposing is a twelve-week extension. Give the person a total of six months to be out of work. And this has come up because we've had two employees that have been out. One was out for over a year, and we were still paying their portion of insurance. And another person was out for nine months, same, we were still continuing to pay their insurance. So this will lower the exposure of the city to the insurance costs, and could improve our experience rate with the insurance, not having to pay those claims for those individuals that are not on workers' comp.
And I think that's the key, what you said was, because I did get a question about this, and it does cost the city something. Even though the employee's not earning a salary, they're still on our insurance policy for that. Questions?
I think it makes, I think it makes sense.
I think it's fair to say that we talked about this Thursday, too, so that's probably why nobody has any questions. And I expressed then that I was in favor of that.
David, we do need a vote on this, correct?
Correct.
Do we hear a motion? We approve as presented.
I move.
Second.
Have a move and a second to approve. Discussion, not, all in favor? Unanimous. Item three?
Okay, the next item is holiday pay for our permanent part-time employees. Just our permanent, this does not apply to our seasonal or temporary part-time employees. But right now, when we are out enjoying our vacation days off, our part-time employees do not get paid anything. So this is, I propose this to give them holiday pay based on their regular hours that they work in a day. And they make a great commitment to this, to the city. The Pine Mountain Museum, all the people out at Parks and Rec, they make a great contribution to the city, and we are not rewarding them. They have no benefits whatsoever at this point. So I think this is a way to maybe improve their morale a little bit. It would cost the city approximately $9,000 next year, and less than that this year, because we've already had some holidays.
As I understand, there's about twenty of those people?
Yes, sir.
And twelve holidays.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Best, seconded by Councilman McPherson. Discussion, not, call a question, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Stephanie.
We assumed that motion was to approve, right? You just made a motion.
You know, it's a Svengali-type thing. Tab C, Economic Development. Maker of PowerPoint presentation. Maker of PowerPoint presentations.
Good. Short and sweet. If you just vote yes on all three, I'll stay up here about 30 seconds.
Good stuff.
Oh, good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. Really quickly, we have two vacant board positions on the Main Street Advisory Board that we like to get filled, so we can get back up to full capacity. At the regular meeting of the Main Street Advisory Board, they recommended two individuals to fill those positions. That would be Casey Cole and Rhonda McCullers, and we will leave that up to the council to fill those positions.
We need a motion?
That's it.
Make a motion that these two vacant positions with Casey Cole and Rhonda McCullers.
Second. Have a motion and a second? Discussion?
Yeah, question. Which ones having, will be ending on 2018?
I leave that up to the council.
Why don't we leave that up to you?
Yes, sir.
I like that idea, too.
I will be happy to do that. So how about we do, for the first one ending 12/13, we do the Casey Cole. 12/31/2018, Casey Cole, and then Rhonda McCullers for 12/31/2019.
In the order they appear, okay?
In the order they appear.
Hey, do I need to modify?
Nope.
No, that was a discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Call a question? All in favor? Unanimous.
Chris, if you wouldn't mind mentioning, well, I could just do it. These people are volunteers, and they put in a lot of time. And the cool thing was, when they did these nominations, and I appreciated you pointing this out in the work session, is they made it very clear, instead of people just putting an application going, "Yeah, I'd kind of like do that," you met with them, y'all met with them and talked about the time involvement and everything, so people have a clue of what they're getting into.
Correct.
And it gives you a chance to kind of vet the candidates and see if they meet what you need on the committee. So I just appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Item 2.
All right, the next item is presented for information, the 2017 tourism budget. As you all are aware of, the council or the city of Villa Rica has a contract with the Downtown Development Authority to manage tourism and product development for the city of Villa Rica as it relates to tourism. Part of that agreement is the presentation of annual budget to the city council. This year, we are projecting to receive about $51,500 in hotel motel tax. This does not include the new hotel, which will be coming online. We met with the general manager of that hotel today. They anticipate sometime around June, weather permitting, and no more delays, that the hotel should be open, the Holiday Inn Express. So we're excited about that. So we'll have actually six months of tax collections from that hotel, once it comes online, well, six or five, depending on how quickly they open. So that will impact this bottom-line number, but this projection is, includes collection minus that hotel being involved. This is projections that we got from the finance department, so if they're not right, you can blame Sarah for that.
Do we have that available to be on the screen?
Just very quickly, most of the line items are the same as in the 2016 budget, with the addition of the leisure and sports marketing portion of it. We have anticipating on developing sports advisory council, if you will, to kind of help with the process of engaging and putting in bids to host sports tournaments here in the city of Villa Rica. We think that that would be a great asset for us. We have a lot of facilities inside the city limits that would be great for different tournaments. We do host some now, but we'd like to bolster that up a little bit and put, as we say in the hotel industry, more heads in beds, and that will make that hotel motel tax collection number increase even more. So we're excited to try to make that something that's really significant for the city, and possibly to generate more revenue for our other businesses, our restaurants, gas stations, obviously, and other entities within the city, so.
Chris, can I make a comment there, too?
Go ahead.
Since two of us spent most of our adult careers in recreation, just a suggestion, when you start putting those packets together, one of the most effective cities that I've ever seen promote tournaments, sporting events, is the city of Cartersville. City of Roswell also does a good job. But what they do is, they put together a little packet of information in a plastic bag, and it has a map of the city, it has all the restaurants, some of the restaurants even contribute with coupons, because if you, I can tell every time there's a tournament in town at V-Plex, because the restaurants are covered up in Villa Rica. And so I would just encourage you to include, you know, the groups downtown, all the business owners, and let them be a part of it.
Yeah, there'll be a bid package that we put together for that. That would include all of that information. Great recommendation.
Other questions?
Ah, yes, I understand this budget, proposed budget, does not include the new 5% to 8% increase in the hotel tax?
That's correct.
There'll be extra money?
When we put the budget together, that wasn't even in consideration, when we put the budget together. We'll make an adjustment, once we figure out when we will actually be able to initiate the tax. But this, just like with anything else, when the council does a budget amendment, we can do the same thing with this budget. We just don't know when that tax collection will start. Sarah and I are actually working on that.
And you didn't take into account the new Holiday Inn Express is fixing to come online?
That's because we did not know when exactly that was going to happen, so. We still don't know exactly when it's going to happen. We just know they anticipate June.
Well, with the legislation, even if it passes, a lot of time, it doesn't go into effect till July, so it's kind of hard to bank on that money if you don't know for sure, number one, it's going to pass.
Sure.
And you're not going to have the money for this whole, at least the first half of the year, I don't think.
Correct.
Further discussion? Need a vote on the budget? So do I hear a motion to accept a budget, his budget as presented?
Second.
Have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Shirley did.
Okay. Motion and a second? All in favor? Unanimous. You on the roll? On the roll?
It's got to stop somewhere.
Well, there's plenty more other agenda items after me.
That's right. We like long agendas. We specialize in that.
All right. The next item on the agenda is grant request from the Arts Coalition for $2,356.50. This is a request from the funds that were allocated by the city council from the Community Development Grant Fund program. We allocated $15,000 in 2017 budget for that. And that budget is for community organizations that host events in the city of Villa Rica. This is to help support and make sure that those events are successful. There is a benefit as a whole to the city, specifically downtown, in this particular instance, where we have people, an event that will drive traffic to our downtown businesses. It utilizes the Mill Amphitheater, which is something that is important. That's the reason why we built it, was to have community events like this. And it helps a worthwhile organization. They raise funds to promote the arts and cultural activities in the city of Villa Rica. As I always say, we love to have events, and sometimes it's great for us to organize and promote them, but I'd rather have somebody else do it, and then we help them. So that way, I don't have to work as much.
That means you don't need an assistant.
I need another assistant.
Oh, okay, okay. Just checking, huh?
I need two, actually.
Oh, oh, okay.
We'll put that in next budget. But this is just a great opportunity for us to support this organization. As you all know, we struggled with figuring out, how do we help these organizations in a way that's fair and balanced? So we put together this package, which lays out all of the expenses associated with the event, and all the organizations that will be applying for this grant funding will use the same funding formula, so that's the same across the board for everyone. We find that that is the best way for us to make sure that we're applying the rules to the same to every organization. So with that, I will answer any questions that you all may have.
Just want to make sure, I'll reiterate, I said it in the work session, but I want to see banners up in town in advance of this. I love the artwork here, and I would like to see those banners up in town.
We actually met with the group today. They are getting ready to start their marketing and advertising, and so that will include banners, not only in Villa Rica, but they're going to put banners up and surround the communities as well.
Great.
I move to approve this grant.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds? Discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous.
Wonderful.
And just mention again, these people are volunteers that do this stuff, and the city could do it, but who's better to do it? People that have a passion for the art? Who would do it better? Us or them? Them. They have a passion for it, they love art, and they volunteer their time. How great is that?
Mr. Mecklen.
Yes, sir.
Should we have put a total limit on, not just for this, but I'm talking about in the future as well? For instance, should the motion have been, we want to approve $23,56.50, or should we just?
I think it goes without saying that you approved what was presented to you, and that's the sum that was presented to you. But to your credit, it always helps to throw in that limit, to make sure that the minutes are precise.
Next time, we'll do that.
Thank you, Chris. No PowerPoint presentation of Chris. Tab D, Public Works. Pete?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is a request to ratify the agreement for the distribution of water model update project with smart water analytics in the amount of $14,300.
Pete, can you give us just a little bit of background?
Yes, this is really a continuation of trying to optimize the distribution system. So this particular project is out in the Liberty Road, Full Road area, where we're taking a look at the pressures and the flow in this area, and trying to make sure that, trying to determine what our water age out there is, and water quality, see if we can improve on that, and how we're moving flow through the distribution system out in that area. This project also, as I mentioned in the work session, will also assist us in an application that we're currently working on, will submit, hopefully at the end of this week, to Jifa for a grant, to further this type of work.
And Jifa is, since we're using government language, is?
Georgia Environmental Finance Authority.
Okay. Since everybody doesn't talk in that lingo.
I asked a question, or several questions, but the biggest issue that I have is that if you would please get with, I guess, Ms. Hefty, and put in the water bill that you're going to be testing some fire hydrants?
Yes.
It seems as though, when we do that and don't tell the public, city hall is inundated, along with the police department, about somebody has turned a fire hydrant on out here, what do we do? So if, that would be, whenever you decide to do it, maybe a month in advance would be great, even to the point of the local radio station in Carrollton. And if you give me what you need down there, I might be able to help you there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Pete, for kind of carrying the ball on this, too, and getting that information for us. We're committed to public safety, and this is what this is a part of, so I commend you for your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Further questions?
That's an update, so it's already been...
Yes, this is an update.
Didn't you say that this will qualify us for, help qualify us for some possible grant money?
Yes.
To assist with it, and that part of this information you get, if I remember from the work session, just want to clarify, part of this information has to do with how we know if we have the appropriate pressure to be able to put out fires and that sort of thing? Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
He's not asking for approval of that $14,300.
It's been approved.
Sorry.
All right. Okay.
It's already happening. This is going on.
Tab F, Vicki?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
F1, this item is in support of the city's annual July 3 fireworks event. The city staff put out an invitation to bid for the July 3 fireworks display. The city received two responses back. Both responses were for $23,000. Included in the agenda packet is the bid calculation for the fireworks responses.
Elisa, can you put that up for?
The city staff is recommending East Coast Pyrotechnics, Inc., as a goal.
Which is the same ones that's been in the last two or three years?
That is correct.
And I said this Thursday, I'll say it again, fireworks is one of the hardest things to quantify that I've ever bid out in my life, and you've seen that, Vicki. It's just tough. But basically, what you're looking at with fireworks companies, the more reputable companies are going to bid the big shells, because three-inch shells and smaller are the ones you can buy over in Alabama. So when you get up to the six-inch shells, you require certain permits to even move it across state lines. So basically, that's the way you judge what a shell looks like. There was a really good question, I think Councilman Carter asked it in the work session, what is a prelude to a grant, to a finale? And that just sort of alludes to what, how difficult it can be to judge these and try to compare one company to another. The prelude to the grand finale, if you've been to the fireworks show, you've seen it, you just said, "Oh, that's what it was called," is the sudden burst of shells that you see right before that last volley of shells go up in the air. And so the one that we're recommending, I think they had 400 shells just in the prelude to the grand finale. So that's an important factor when you're trying to compare those bids.
Speaking of fireworks.
There's a firework.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve? So here's a second.
How much is that? We going to quote the amount?
$23,000.
Okay. Per Ms. Best's instructions.
Was that a second?
Shirley did.
Shirley did.
Okay, Shirley, second. I'm sorry, Shirley, I don't mean to. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to mention the winning bid here?
$23,000.
That's down on consent agenda. No.
Okay. All in favor? We'll vote twice. Okay, unanimous.
Great show. Great show, every year.
Item 2, Connor's Road Park.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen, I think we had an easel before, we were backstage, but it was probably stolen from somewhere. That was toward the chief. He brought it.
My apologies, chief. The item before you is the master plan for the Connor's Road Park. Just to give you a little bit of background, there were a series of community meetings that were conducted over the last couple of months. The purpose of the meetings were, the very first one was to really generate ideas over the larger park, what types of uses would be wanted. After that, we conducted a walking tour of the property, to get the community out, getting them a better understanding of how that, the layout of that property, and what the additions were. And the final meeting on that, we focused on the smaller area of the park, just to really look at where there was quite a bit of demand, in terms of what we found was probably the flattest area, and where we could really begin to refine some of the ideas that came from that first meeting and walk tour. So essentially, what you have before you...
Trying to get healthy.
She's going to have to toggle back and forth, excuse me, between two images, but there were two areas that really were defined as it relates to the conceptual plan. There is the larger area towards the back, where what will be, what I can best describe is how the property will remain in what is its most natural state during, and what you have up there right now is the smaller area of the park. I can get you to toggle to the larger correct. So one of the things that it seemed like we all were able to really agree on, because that rear area is going to stay in its natural state, we were able to get out and walk the property and define what you see here are, one was highlighted in yellow, is the primary use is probably the walking trails or biking trails. That area is probably the easiest to walk, if there aren't any accessibility issues. So if I can just kind of go ahead and define... So, if I can just kind of go ahead and define that. When we were, when we got out, we walked the property, we found that there's really, to make this property work for everyone, that rear portion of the property is probably better suited for those who are able to easily move around and maybe not have so many accessibility issues. The topography, the terrain can be a little bit tough or a little bit challenging. So, in order to make the entire park work for everyone, we thought it most appropriate to designate the front end of the property for those, maybe you do have some accessibility issues, and we could create a place that made it easier for you to get out and walk in the event you had families with small children, or you may be a senior. So, you have two really different spaces that are defined. If I go back to talking more about what is at the rear of the property, we have the yellow area, a trail that's, again, is probably more suited, it's a little bit easier, that's an easier trail. That's about two miles around. Additionally, there is an area that's delineated with a red trail, which is a trail that's a little bit more challenging, particularly if you are a person that wants to get out and ride a bike or do some mountain biking, could be the best way to describe it. That's that area that maybe, that we would have delineated in red. The important things that I didn't touch on the other, at our last meeting, there is a wetlands area that's delineated. There are a lot of things that came up in terms of ideas, whether there may be a viewing station or particularly a bridge. And it's something that is possible to do. The challenge with that, however, I would say, is that it requires a permitting process that's a little bit more challenging. You have to go through the core for that, as well as bridges and any extensions out to there could be very expensive. So, I want to make sure I do highlight and touch on that, that certainly that was something that came up in community meetings that it was certainly possible to do. It just requires a little bit more permitting and plan review from a governmental standpoint, and it may be a little bit expensive. We delineated the areas at the front, but I also want to point out, there are certainly opportunities at the rear that we didn't, we talked about them, but we didn't go in and delineate those areas. It's up to that upper left corner. There are some access issues that I do want to point out, that you wouldn't really be able to access that particular part of the property from the main entrance of what will be in this place. The only access actually could come from, if you guys can tell, there is a subdivision to the rear, which one day could potentially provide access from back there. So, I do want to point out that it was something that was talked about in the community meetings, but access from where we're planning from right now is limited just due to the wetlands and crossing the wetlands. If I can get you to toggle back to that, to the smaller area now. Yes, ma'am. So, yes, thank you. As I mentioned, the space is really kind of defined in two ways. This is the area where we wanted to make sure that there was access for everyone. What, this was the area that had the greatest amount of demand. This is the flattest, naturally, most naturally flat area of the park. One of the ideas that came out of the discussion, you could see in dog parks that are designated over to the right, an area for large and area for small dogs. Over on the left-hand side is more of the open area, which provides more flexibility in terms of space and use. There is a quarter-mile trail around it. As I said, it's probably more appropriate if you have accessibility issues, small children, restrooms and bathrooms. Excuse me, restrooms and canopy in a small playground. I would point out that there are two other things that came up in terms of conversation. And it's really the final things, is the parking and the access into the facility. The, we talked quite a bit about having parking areas that would really have the least amount of impact. So, the final thing that I would really point out is that we thought it would be most appropriate, just with the topo changes, to actually asphalt the driveway. It's one of the things that we discussed in the meetings and leave the parking areas more permeable parking spaces. So, you can kind of see the color changes or the differences in there. And we wanted to ensure that there was adequate accessibility. So, you see what's delineated would be surfaces that if you had, again, access, accessibility issues, whether handicap parking, you could actually navigate from that top parking area maybe down to the lower area, second, secondary parking area where the dog parks are, if need be. So, in general, that's just a really quick summary of what we were able to establish with the concept plan for the parks. What I mentioned is that we would also come back at a later date. There were a lot of discussions as it relates to uses and future rules for the park. Some of those things related to whether horses would be appropriate in the space. And so, there were a lot of logistical issues that came up with discussions and the community weighed in. But those are some things that we don't necessarily have to make the final decisions on now. What's before you is just generally the conceptual layout of the Connors Road master plan.
Vicki, just a few comments. We have someone from Falcon Design here also, if we have any questions. But two public comments that were made, I think are very, were very well made. And that is, number one, we need to enlist the help of volunteers to help lay out these trails, because they know, you know, that's what they do. And they're very gung ho. I think I missed one of the charrettes. And they are a very gung ho group. And I hope we continue to keep in contact with them and let them know where we are in the process. Also, what was the other point I was gonna?
Dog park.
Dog park. Is, and this may be a better question for you, but it, I would agree that that is a very small dog park. I have a very small dog, and I think that half acre would probably be not much of a challenge for my small dog. So, to the extent that we can, I know we're, you know, we're limited by the terrain, the topography of the property, but I would like to see us increase the size of that. I think that was a very good point. Vicki, I'd also ask you to, in the work session, to come up with a tentative schedule for completion of this. And Alisa, can you put that up? While she's putting that up, Vicki, another question that was asked in the work session was, what are we limited to? Or, you know, the group of folks that donated this land, what are we going to do as far as the trees are concerned? I would hate to know that we're going to build this park, and they're going to come in and take out those second growth poplars and a lot of those big trees. So, will you just kind of touch on that just a little bit? I know you provided that information.
Sure. So, this is really, I guess, a continued partnership, if you will, for the Southeastern Trust for Parks and Land. I have provided them a copy of the conceptual plan that was developed through the meetings. And essentially, they're here to be partners and help us in any way that we need. Part of that is, is where we've identified the areas that we want cleared. That's what they're going to clear base around what our needs are. It's not their desire to go in and, you know, clear out the canopy, particularly towards the back. I think, you know, that's really the best way to really answer that question. They're here to support us in whatever we need and how we want the park to develop towards the front.
Just to add to that, I think if we tell them we don't want trees cut down, they won't cut them down.
We don't want those trees cut down.
And yet, they'll save us, they'll save us money by clearing the area that we do need to clear. Would you clarify, since it's a passive park, some of the things that are obvious that we won't have out there? Because people may think they're going to come out with their four-wheeler or whatever. You may just want to mention what a passive park isn't, so people, and that this is tied in. We didn't just make this up. We have an agreement with who gave us the land as to how it would be used. Would you just explain that briefly?
Absolutely. There are some deed restrictions on the property that are there in perpetuity. So, really, the idea, or the things that are outlined, is to have something that provides the least amount of impact to the environment. So, with passive parks, there are certain things that are normal practice. And then, there are the things that are certainly identified in the deed restrictions. In terms of what you get with the four-wheelers and any kind of gas-powered vehicles, those aren't explicitly spelled out as being restricted. But in practice, those aren't necessarily the things that are, would ever be encouraged here just because of the potential of what the impact is to the environment. Again, you have national wetlands up here. You don't want to create a situation where anything potentially is leaking that's toxic, that's going to impact the land or potentially, you know, run into any of those waterways. It also speaks to what, in terms of covering, I'll just touch on some of the deed restrictions. They're really looking for, you know, permeable surfaces as much as possible, because they want that infiltration. Again, it's about having the least amount of impact on the environment. Typically, with passive parks, it's about moving away from anything that is really programmed, if you will, but how can you create a park or recreational space where you're leaving it in a natural state as much as possible? So, maybe that provides just a general idea or a summary.
Almost felt like you sort of opened the door just a little bit for motorized vehicles. So, I don't think it's the desire of the council or the groups that we have anything motorized on those trails.
Especially as a pedestrian or somebody on a bicycle meeting a four-wheeler.
Right. Again, that's something that's typically in practice in a lot of passive parks. It's something that's, hold, if you will.
Let me go back to the layout of these dog parks. They're laid out very small, as has been pointed out. And the mayor talked about wanting to encourage those to be larger, and I agree with that. Why are they so small?
Well, the current topography of the land, what we did was looked at, you know, what are the flattest areas? Right now, we tried to maximize the flat area. There's a lot of very vast gray changes, if you will, to increase the size of it. You'd really be talking about cutting further into, into the land to flatten everything out. So, you know, we'll weigh it by ways as we move into the project, whether, you know, there are, if that's as far as we can go. Or, again, there's some trade-offs when you go to do further cutting into the existing.
Okay. Well, I think we'd like you to do the best you can to make it larger. But I figured there must be a reason why it was so small, and that makes sense to me. The other piece is, oh, with Sorba. I attended, I think y'all had three of these meetings, right? I attended two of them. And they were, I want to say, they were very gung ho about their work. And I want to make sure that we continue to work with them and let them be as involved as they're willing to be, because I know that they've been involved in this kind of thing. And I think they do a good bit out of Clinton, at Clinton Nature Preserve, right?
Yes, they do. I wouldn't, you know, it's certainly my intention to maybe bring back an MOU to maybe define up some things a little bit. I think that makes sense. I think they'd be a great partner. You know, again, they have the experience with, you know, cutting trails in the back. I think that's going to be most appropriate, and it makes sense.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just use our Recreation Advisory Committee, maybe go out there and have them maybe look at that dog area, and maybe they can help. Since they're an advisory committee, give us some advice of what they saw out there as far as the dog park, what some of the challenges will be if we expand it or whatever. Use some of our volunteers, so, anyway. But thank you.
And I just want to thank those, and the public. Some of you in this room right now have attended those meetings, and I appreciate that. They were well-attended. A lot of folks were there, given a lot of good input. Vicki, thanks to you and your staff for putting those on. And I think it's going to be a great thing for the city of Villarica. You may have pointed this out, but this was actually part of the SPOLOs reform that was passed by the voters this past November in Douglas County. So, the funding for that will come from that source.
That is correct.
Further questions? Thank you, Vicki. Tab G, Governing Body. Item 1, Cemetery Bylaws.
We have to approve the conceptual plan. And just so nobody panics, that doesn't mean we approve exactly what's drawn out there. That's conceptual, we can change it, we can tweak it. And so, it doesn't mean we're going to do exactly what's in those pictures.
Right. You know, at some point, when we're ready to move forward, the space would truly have to be engineered. So, that's when we get a better understanding in a sense of the state's fact conditions and what's actually feasible to really do in terms of developing the property, so.
I make a motion that we approve the Connors Road Park master plan.
I second it.
Well, hang on. I think this is one of those moments, we probably need to spell it out a little bit better than that. This is a conceptual plan. You said it, but is that, is that your mo, would you like to amend your motion to?
I'll amend my emotion to.
Emotion?
Say again?
You have an emotion?
Oh, yeah, well, I have a lot of those too. Approve the, make a motion to approve the conceptual plan of the Connors Road Park. How's that?
I still second it.
Have a motion to second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Try not to get too emotional about it.
Unanimous. Thank you, Vicki. Now, Tab G, Item 1, Cemetery Commission.
On behalf of the Cemetery Commission, we have a request to amend our bylaws. And I talked about this last week. According to our bylaws for the Cemetery Commission, we have, just a second. Let me back up. According to the bylaws, the membership of the Cemetery Commission consists of seven members, and they're courted by the mayor. But three of those members shall include one representative of the American Legion Post Number 70, which is in Villarica, one representative from a Villarica funeral home, and a representative from the Villarica Garden Club. Well, at this time, the Villarica Garden Club is not an active club, okay? So, it doesn't make sense to put a member there. So, we are requesting that you change the wording of the bylaws. It's Section 2 under Membership Appointment Term of Vacancies. The wording says the membership of the Cemetery Commission shall include the following, which was those three that I just spoke. We want to change that to the mayor shall strive to include appointees from the following organization, which means if we can't get a member from American Legion Post, we've got another opportunity to get someone else that would like to serve on the commission.
Is our city attorney review this?
I have. I think it looks fine.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to a second. Motion to accept. I second, boy, y'all are quick. Discussion. Not all in favor? Unanimous. Item 2, Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, you should have received your minutes.
Received the January minutes, but I haven't seen the others.
I received January. Table, all of them?
No, we can approve the January, because we did get that.
January 18th?
No, I read January.
January 18th.
Did anyone get their copy of the January?
Yep.
I got my copy, but I wasn't actually at the meeting. So, I'm thinking maybe I should abstain from the approval of saying that they're accurate since I was not there.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the January 18th minutes only?
So, move.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Shirley. Shirley.
All in favor? Unanimous. Well, we had one abstain because she wouldn't.
We need to make a motion to table the other three, or David?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, just to document these minutes.
Make a motion that we table approving the minutes from February the 2nd, February 16th, and February 21st, 2017.
Second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor? Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Item three, city of ethics. David, are you going to?
Lisa, did they get a copy of the resolution? Okay. You should have received a copy of a resolution. I think they got a copy of the existing ordinance, but I'm not sure you've gotten the resolution, so let me just read that out.
I might have gotten it in your email. I read so much stuff.
You did. You sent it. I've got a copy of it.
Okay, so if everybody has gotten it, then I won't read unless you want me to.
I don't think everybody does. I think I printed.
Let me read it out, then. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Georgia Municipal Association has established a certified city of ethics program, and whereas the city of Villarica wishes to be certified as a certified city of ethics under the GMA program, and whereas part of the certification process requires the mayor and council to subscribe to the ethics principles approved by the GMA board, now therefore be resolved by the governing authority of the city of Villarica, Georgia, that as a group and as individuals, the governing authority subscribes to the following ethics principles and pledges to conduct its affairs accordingly. To serve others, not ourselves, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents, to create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. The city hereby readopts and ordains its existing ethics ordinance contained in sections 180 through 189 of Article 6, Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, resolved this blank day of March 2017. That's the resolution before you. And it's essentially just to re-adopt what already exists.
That's what I wanted to clarify. That's what we talked about at the work session. We're just re-adopting.
Correct.
What we already had in place.
Yes. And they require that we re-adopt it every several years.
I don't normally like to approve something I haven't seen, but it sounded real good as you read it, so I'll move to approve the resolution.
Resolution is very.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for a code of, see, what we call it, city of ethics. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item four, charter amendment.
Before you is a first reading of a proposed charter amendment, and just to give you some background, under the Georgia constitution and Georgia laws, the city has the power to establish parts of our own charter ourselves through the home rule process. Excuse me, some parts of our charter we can't change, primarily the parts where the governing authority itself is established, but other parts we do have the right to change. And during the course of our review of the charter that began last year, it's still not been completed, we did identify a few parts of our charter that are problematic and need to be addressed, and this is a particular part that needs to be addressed prior to the overall rewrite that's coming up soon, I hope. In our charter, we had three sections that dealt with the appointment and termination of the city manager. And as best I can tell, these parts came at different times, and it's just sort of a hodgepodge. Section 3.20 provided that the city manager serves at the pleasure of the council, and that's the way that we have treated it over the year, treated it over the years. We have had always, for our least the last several city managers have had a contract with them that provided that they acknowledged that they could be hired and fired at will. Well, sections 3.23 and section 3.24 are in conflict with section 3.20 in that they provide, section 3.23 provides that city managers can be terminated for cause, and then section 3.24 gives a process for doing that. The reason for deleting sections 2.3.23 and 3.24 are just to bring us back into consistency with what our practice has been for the last 15 years or more, so that there won't be any type of possible misunderstanding somewhere down the road with regard to that. You can't vote on that tonight. We have to raise it up to the public to view. We have to advertise it in the newspaper and leave copies of the proposed change with the city clerk's office, as well as the clerks of Superior Court in Carroll and Douglas County. I anticipate bringing this back to you for a vote at the April meeting.
David, do we also have to have some sort of public hearing where people are allowed to give comment on it? How's that work?
You're not required to, but at the, at the public here, at our public comments section, I would urge that we have a public hearing on it. And in the advertisement that we run in the newspaper, I think I'll add something in that says that comments will be accepted before action by the council at your next meeting, as well as if people want to email or write, call you, they can do so. It will be as transparent as we can so people can have a voice about it.
So are we going to do public comment now, or are you talking about doing it at the April meeting?
In the April meeting.
Okay. And just for the public, this is not an end of the process. As far as the charter is concerned, this is just the beginning. So no vote is needed, so this will be on the April agenda. Item six, planning and zoning commission.
I think I probably need to speak to this, since this involves my representative in the planning and zoning ward five. Each of the five members that represent the city of the five wards are allowed to appoint a representative to the planning and zoning commission. My representative was not, I had a attendance problem, not attending enough meetings, so I elected to replace my representative this year, and I had no one come forward that wanted that position. So with the recommendation of Councilman McDougall over here, I used Clara Thomas. However, she found she wasn't going to have the time to donate, and he had another recommendation, Cassandra Titabak?
Christina.
Christina. And I was going to appoint her until last Thursday's work session. Then last Thursday, I actually had someone that lived in Ward five, and we prefer to have equal representation across the city. We want someone living in our ward to represent us on planning and zoning. So Larry Coors came forward and said he would like that position, he would like that appointment, and he has served on the planning and zoning in the past. So I considered Ms. Titabak to be qualified and Larry Coors to be qualified, but Larry does live in Ward five, and we prefer to have him live in the ward they represent. So I am presenting Larry Coors as my representative of planning and zoning. And I spoke to Christina Titabak and explained the situation to her, and she was quite okay with it.
Does this require a vote, David?
To appoint Mr. Coors to the planning and zoning commission, I think the council's always approved those nominees, yes.
Mr. Coors is in the audience here, attends most of our council meetings, so do I hear a motion we approve Larry Coors for the planning and zoning commission?
So I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, item seven, Georgia Cities Week.
Good afternoon, again. This is a resolution with regard to the Georgia Cities Week. Annually, the Georgia Municipal Association designates a week to, for local governments to essentially use that time to educate its citizens about the services that they provide. This year, the Georgia Cities Week will be the week of April 23rd through 29th. The theme for this week, I mean, excuse me, this, for this event this year is cities in the mix. Typically for staff, it's our time to, for all the departments, again, just to come together, plan different events throughout the week. And this resolution is just one of the shows of support by the city council for staff's planning efforts.
I don't, does anyone have that resolution? I don't have it in my.
Don't we do this every year?
Yes.
Yeah, because we did it last year. I don't, there were some different activities going on. I think Chris was in charge of some of the stuff down by the mill or something like that. Some fun stuff for people to come to.
He did his jazz concert as, I think, to close off.
Oh, yeah, that's a pretty good closing. Okay. Is that what we're doing this year? Do the dates match up?
This is a resolution. You want to look at it?
Okay.
It was in my packet.
It's right here.
Vicky and I would like to, I'd like to see us promote this a lot better this year. You know, going to the newly elected officials institute last week with my colleague over here, Councilman McDougall, you find that you learn as much from talking to your councilmen and mayor of some other cities as you do from the instructors. Nothing against the instructors, but we had some really good discussions with other city councilmen and mayors, and, you know, it seems to me that they really get behind this effort. GMA does a really good job of trying to unite the entire state of Georgia with this effort. So I would just encourage you to put banners up and, you know, host events and let the public know what this is about, so.
I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution for Georgia Cities Week, April the 23rd through the 29th. All in favor? Unanimous.
I'll make you a copy.
Okay. Item eight, annual city cleanup, and before we discuss this, I want to give kudos to Councilman Marchman and Councilman Best. I know I sat out there where Mr. Taylor's sitting right now for many years, and I heard the two of them each year push this event, and what it is, I'm not going to take their thunder, I'm going to let them say it, but I just, I do want to give them kudos for carrying this forward every year, and Charlie, for you, for making it happen on the actual end out there, the working end of the deal. But, you know, one of the things that attracted me to Villarica back in 1998 was the fact that the community seemed to really care. The roads were clean, you know, people seemed to take care of their properties, and that attracted me to the city from Cobb County. So I hope we always do this. I think it's a good thing for the city. So with that, I will let these two here discuss it.
Okay. Several, several years ago, I go across the state, several states, fish a little bit, and all the cities that I keep going into, I keep looking at. And from Milledgeville to Macon to Eufaula to Chattanooga to Birmingham, all these places, they had one thing in common. They were all dirty. And when I come back to Villarica, all of a sudden, it dawned on me, hey, we may be considered just as dirty as they are. So we come up with this campaign, Mr. Marchman and I talked about it several years ago, with the idea of let's have a cleanup Villarica Day. So each year, we try to do a cleanup Villarica Day, and that, that means that everybody in the city of Villarica has got something around their house they can get rid of. Some people may be inside, some people may be outside, but, you know, guys, I'm sorry, the ladies inside, they're going to rue the roost, and you may have to go do inside and pull something out. But with that being said, there are also some people that can't pull the stuff from their house to the curb. So if they'll call City Hall, talk to the people there, there will be somebody coming out to talk with those people that are invalid or sick or disabled. If they'll sign a waiver, then we'll have some people go out and move their stuff from wherever they, they direct, whatever they direct, to the curb. It's worked that way now for 10 years, I know. There are some limitations. You know, last year, we, we start, we actually did some tires, but it cost us quite a bit of money. Hopefully, between now and the time we do this, there's a company in Villarica that's going to start shredding tires. So we, I really want to be able to talk to those folks and see if we can just carry the tires over, let them do whatever they do to them, and do whatever they want to do with them, just to be able to get them out of, out of our city. We don't do cars. We would not, there may be a time and a place that somebody may, they come do that and sell it and whatever, but the other thing is, is we don't do any kind of a freon and any, whether it be a refrigerator or an air conditioner. You know, if you have a doubt, simply call the city of Villarica and ask them, what can I put out there and what I can't, what I can't put out there.
Lisa, would you move it up so they can see what's not allowed?
I was going to read the little disclaimer, really fast like they do on TV.
There you go. Now, now they can read it for themselves.
Well, really, I'm not talking about these folks here. These folks here, you know, they're concerned about some of the things we talk about. I say this every year. Really, you know, these folks come out because something's happening in their own backyard. The ones that I'm concerned with, there's a one sitting at home right now, and they don't have that computer turned on watching on TV, yet their, their house looks like it's been that way for 25 years. Those are the ones that I'm concerned with, because if we're going to start being a tourism destination for our city, then the people that's coming in, and in fact, you people don't understand, 12 years ago, maybe, we had a world series with people coming in from all over the world to play baseball at the Vplex. Forty-eight teams, and they come in from all over the world. I want them to go back with a good taste in their mouth about that little bit of southern town just outside of Atlanta. And the only way we can do that is with your help, and with the people, the newspaper help and the radio help, and just understand what, what we're up against. It's going to happen. There's things that happen. My house is just as bad as some of the others, because I'm too lazy to get out there and do it. Well, it's time to put up or shut up. We're going to take this, this week, and we're going to go out and clean the city up one time a year where it'll look nice. And then hopefully, it'll just stay looking nice over and over and over, don't have to do as much next year. The issue now comes that we do it by the week. We don't do it by one day. We don't have enough manpower to do it by one day. The request the other night was, you know, when to do this, and my suggestion was to back it up one day to make it coincide with the dates that are on, on this, is 2017.
Okay. So the dates this year will be?
Eighteenth through the twenty-four.
Last week of March.
That's what we said.
But these are, this says 2016, so I just want to.
It'll be the last week of March rather than what this is. We agreed on last week of March, other than that.
Last week of March, and this will be available on the city website for everybody to take a look at, but this coincides with your normal yard waste slash bulk item pickup day, not to be confused with Waste Management Industries Day. That's a different day. Let me just read this little disclaimer of things we do not pick up. Automobiles, boats, cars, parts, creosote-treated wood, cross ties, hazardous materials, household garbage, petroleum-based products, rocks and dirt, items weighing more than 500 pounds, no freon-based appliances or equipment, paint cans unless the lids are removed and the paint dried and mixed with sand, petroleum-based products, roofing shingles, trailers, unbagged lawn clippings or leaves. So that's the list, and again, this will be on the city website, but, but I think it's very important to the city, and kudos to Councilman Marchman and Best for continuing to make this happen.
So it'll be 27 through 31?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just mention real quick also, aside from the company that we hope starts shredding tires, March 18th is the Keep Carroll Beautiful Tire Recycling Event at the Vplex. So if you've got any tires around, or you see one on the side of the road and you have a pickup truck or something where you can throw it in and get it there, I have been appalled at the garbage I see people throw out windows. It just appalls me that there are actually people who have no concept that there's a problem with your entire garbage bag or everything you just bought up at the fast food place, and it's just up and down the street, it gets real bad on pumpkin pound. And I know we're trying to get a handle on that, but the real problem is, we've got people who don't care. And so then we have to get community service people out there to pick it up. But the tires, we can do something about the tires ourselves. So on the 18th, at the Vplex, I believe it's like nine to one, something like that?
It's nine to one.
Nine to one. And the first 10 tires are free. And Ms. Mayfield, thank you, last year, when you helped me give out flyers for this citywide pickup to every house in Fullerville, we went up and down every street and handed them, and knocked on people's doors to try to let them know that it'd be fine. them, and knocked on people's doors to try to let them know that it'd be fine with us if they wanted to throw away some of that stuff.
Y'all get the word out, you know, according to the CDC, and I know a lot of cities are still spraying for mosquitoes, but according to the CDC, it's more effective to get rid of places where mosquitoes, uh, lay eggs than it is to, to do the spraying program. So, I would just encourage everybody to tell your neighbor, if you see tires out in their yards, just, you know, let them know that they can carry them over that day, and they won't have to pay for a disposal fee. And it's going to be in the large parking lot, Vicky, I believe, right there below the, the football field, so it will not interfere with, with practices or games that are scheduled that day. So, okay, and again, this will be on the city website for everybody to take a look at. Okay. Tab H, Executive Session.
Mayor, uh, let me just read out a proposed, uh, motion for the executive session. Sorry, it disappeared on me. I would propose that the city council go into executive session for the purpose of a meeting to discuss the future acquisition of real estate, except that such meeting should be subject to the requirements of the chapter for the giving of notice of such meeting to the public in preparing the minutes of the meeting. It is to, uh, for the purpose of discussing the appraisal and potential acquisition of property. Secondly, a meeting to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a public officer or employees, for those two purposes only.
Do I hear a motion? So, move. A motion to go into executive session. Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Unanimous. Y'all stick around.
But you don't have to.
Depends on what your definition of long is.